Community members and those who are watching at home, will the secretary please take a roll call?
Commissioner Vandermeulen.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Edsel.
Here.
Vice Chair Davidson.
Here.
Chair Limone.
Here.
I will now stand for the pledge of allegiance. Please Commissioner Murphy will lead us.
Could everyone please rise and face the flag? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, in the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice to be held.
Thank you. And now we have our consent calendar. This consists of the minutes for the meeting of November 4th. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve.
I second it.
Okay, please call for a vote.
Commissioner Vandermeulen.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Edsel.
Yes.
Vice Chair Davidson.
Yes.
Chair Limone.
Yes.
Okay, the next item is public comment for items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. The public hearing is now open. We have three items for consideration on tonight's agenda. The first item is a conditional use permit 443 for YAC Cheerleading and Tumbling Program with a staff recommendation to find that the CUP is exempt from CEQA review and to adopt a resolution for approval. Please proceed with your report.
Madam Chair, excuse me, I have to recuse myself on this one because I own property within the 500-foot radius of this property.
Thank you, Commissioner Edsel.
Chair Limone, I'll have to recuse myself for the same reason. My business is within 500 feet of the application.
Thank you, Commissioner Murphy. This item is going to be presented by our assistant planner, Sean Kunitow.
Good evening Chair Limone and Commissioners.
Good evening.
The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the use of a cheerleading and tumbling facility inside of a 4,011-square-foot unit within an existing multi-industrial building. The subject unit is located at 4023 Camino Ranchero within a multi-tenant industrial complex consisting of nine units. Directly west of the site is 4011 Camino Ranchero, which also contains nine units. Both buildings are situated within the Camrio Ranch Business Center. Other multi-tenant industrial buildings are located to the north, south, and west of the property, and Callejas Creek and the bike trail to the east. The subject property has a land use designation of industrial and the property zone M1 light manufacturing. The applicant proposes no physical changes to the site. Pursuant to the Camrio Manswell Code that is referenced above, the proposed indoor cheerleading and tumbling facility requires a total of 18 parking spaces. The industrial complex currently provides 103 onsite parking spaces. Based on the required parking ratio for industrial and office use, the two buildings together totals 42,098 square feet, requires 78 spaces. This results in a surplus of 28 parking spaces, ensuring adequate parking availability to accommodate the proposed use. The proposed floor plan includes a 20-foot tumble track shown in blue, right there, and a 12-foot landing mat shown in green, right there. These features will be surrounded by wall-to-wall carpet bonded mats highlighted in light orange covering approximately 3,400 square feet. During operating hours, four coaches will be onsite to supervise up to 40 child participants. The business proposes to operate primarily Monday through Friday from 3:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., aligning with after-school hours with occasional weekend practices. The facility will be used strictly for practice purposes, and there will be no competition taking place at this location. Here you'll find sample photos illustrating the carpeted gym mats, along with images of the 20-foot tumble track and the 12-foot landing mat. CUP 443 is exempt from CEQA. Staff recommends the planning commission find CUP 443 categorically exempt from the provisions of CEQA and adopting a resolution approving the project subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? No?
Just one. Didn't we approve a golf facility very close to this, right?
Right next door.
Right next door, perfect.
Correct. That was Unit A, this is Unit I.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Okay, a public comment is now open. We have two public comment cards from the applicants, Danielle Davis and Adam Valencia. Will you please approach the podium and state your full name for the record? You have up to three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Danielle Davis. I'm the cheer director for YAC, which is Young Athletes for Christ. I'm here with our program director, Adam Valencia. We just want to say first, just say thank you to the city, to the staff for helping us, guiding us through this process, and for your time tonight. We agree to all the conditions. We are just excited to be able to have this program in our community that provides a safe and structured environment for our youth and our families in our community.
Yeah, I want to say thank you and good evening to all of you. I want to just commend your leadership. They were amazing with us and helping us through the whole entire process. And again, I want to thank all of you for that.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. It seemed like a good place to have this. And I don't think we've got anything else similar to that in the city. So, at least I hadn't heard of any, didn't find any. So I think it's going to serve a good purpose.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you guys very much.
I do have just one question. I assume, but just wanted to confirm that it is open to the general public.
It is. We primarily have team practices, so most of the kids that come to our facility are part of our team. And we do have a handful of outside youth that come in just for classes. But yes, it is, it could potentially be open to, for our classes for anybody. Yes.
And we welcome that, actually. We welcome that, so definitely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay, and does staff have any final comments? Okay, a closed public hearing. Any discussion?
Seems like a great idea and something very good, very good and well-needed in the community.
Great, right. Can you call for a resolution?
Resolution number PC 2025-12, a resolution recommending approval of the Planning Commission of the City of Camrio approving a request from Danielle Davis, YAC Cheerleading and Tumbling Program for a conditional use permit to establish an indoor cheerleading and tumbling practice facility inside of an existing 4,011-square-foot unit located in a multi-tenant industrial building at 4023 Camino Ranchero, Unit I, in the light manufacturing zone further described as CUP 443.
Thank you. I'll wait for the reading and move to voting.
And I'll second.
Okay, can you please call for a vote?
Commissioner Vandermeulen.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Oh, correct.
Is recused.
Vice Chair Davidson.
Yes.
Chair Limone.
Yes.
Okay, the item is approved. The next item on the agenda is conditional use permit for 40 Hanks Barber mixed use, again with the staff recommendation to find that the CUP is exempt from CEQA review and to adopt a resolution for approval. Please proceed with the staff report.
This item is going to be presented by associate planner Serena Gonzalez.
Oh, yeah. Good evening, Planning Commission and members of the public. Tonight I will be presenting, as mentioned, on Hank's Barber Mixed Use Project. The request is for an approval of a conditional use permit to convert two existing commercial suites totaling 1,302 square feet into two new residential units. The project location is in Old Town. It is at 2260 East Ventura Boulevard. The property has a general plan designation of commercial and is zoned Camrio Old Town. Directly, oh, sorry, wrong button. Directly adjacent to the site, we have a retail use. Across the street is another retail use. And then on the left side in this project here is the Channel Islands Art Center, I believe it's called. So here, I apologize, it's a little cramped, but here is the floor plan showing the second floor units. So currently, Unit C and D are vacant commercial suites, and they will be turned into two residential units. The first one being Unit C is 740 square feet. It is two bedrooms and one bathroom. And the second unit, Unit D over here, is one bedroom, one bath coming in at approximately 592 square feet. The units are on the second floor and will be accessed via the lobby. That can be, you can access both the commercial and residential through there. And that staircase in the back here will take you upstairs to the two units. Pursuant to AB 2097, residential projects within one-half mile of a major transit stop are exempt from additional parking requirements. Additionally, when the building was initially developed, the property owner paid in lieu fees and provided additional parking for public use. So there is sufficient parking surrounding the building. CUP 440 is exempt from CEQA review, and staff recommends that the planning commission find that the project is exempt from CEQA and that they approve the project. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the staff?
I do. Is there anything else on the second floor besides those two units? I take it not.
No, it would just be those two units.
Thank you.
Commissioner Edsel, any questions? Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. Are the lobby and the stairs proposed the same as the existing? There's no reconfiguration of those?
Nope. The only changes to the building would be converting it from commercial to residential. No other changes are proposed.
Okay, doesn't sound like a lot of construction, but I was wondering if, in the conditions of approval, if there are limited hours of construction, or would that be in the Camrio Old Town zoning?
The hours would be our standard hours that we have for all construction. I believe that's 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. per the code.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vandermeulen.
I don't have questions.
Okay, great. I'll open it up for a public comment. We have one comment card from the applicant Hank Robles. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name's Hank Robles. Good to see everybody here. Last time I was standing here, I was building the building. Well, I wasn't building, but I was having it built. I recognize Dave over here. But the city's been real good to me, and I hope this project gets approved. I hope it helps our city. I mean, you guys have been great to me. And the Old Town's been a great place for business. I've been in business there a long time. But the city and the folks have been really good to me. I mean, I don't know what else to tell you guys. I hope you guys approve it, you know? I'm excited and nervous all at the same time.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you guys, all of you. You know, I have nothing but help from everybody.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
No.
No? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Robles.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other member of the public who would like to speak on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment. And it's now open for the commissions' discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a great project, and it's going to provide additional housing in Old Town, which our city needs. Are we going to be able to count this for housing element, or are we having?
Yes.
More available rental units?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's good, and it's in a commercial area. Even the construction concerns Tom had, I don't think there's residential close enough to be an issue with that. But I think it'll be a nice addition, and they have their business downstairs. So I think it'll, you know, it'll be, it'll be nice. So I'm in favor of the project.
Yeah, it's, it's nice to see a businessperson who has stuck with Old Town for so many years continue to push the, push the ball forward and try to improve what downtown or Old Town Camrio has to offer. And so it's comforting to me to know that that property is in good hands, a good steward who's taking care of it, and is going to turn it over to the next generation in even better shape than, than what, I remember the old Hanks, and then the Bill, and then you built. So it's, it's really nice to see the care that you're putting into the community. So thank you.
I just want to say that I like the idea that you're using a usable space, and it's not really changing the exterior look of the area at all. And it's going to be a great addition, I think, to down Old Town area, you know, with the livable units. I do want to note, though, that I think the closest residential would be across the parking lot to the end units of the townhomes would be the closest to any of the noise and stuff that would be affected by that. So, but if you're keeping to the regular hours, that shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, I think it's a great, great location. I like adding the two units to our housing element. Hank has been around for a long time, and I think it will be a well-conceived project. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I agree with all the comments and also my support. Would somebody like to call for a resolution, or is there a motion?
Yes, call for a resolution.
Resolution, or resolution number PC 2025-13, a resolution recommending, or a resolution approving a request from Hank Robles for a conditional use permit to convert two second-floor commercial suites into two residential units in Camrio Old Town Zone located at 2260 East Ventura Boulevard, Camrio 93010, in the Camrio Old Town Zone further described as CUP 440. I would make a note that the resolution has a slight edit that needs to be made because the planning commission would be actually approving this item, not making the recommendation to the council.
Thank you for that.
With that change, I would call for, or move to wait for the reading and vote for adoption?
I'll second.
Please call for a vote.
Commissioner Vandermeulen.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Edsel.
Yes.
Vice Chair Davidson.
Yes.
Chair Limone.
Yes.
Okay, the last item on tonight's agenda is a proposed zoning ordinance amendment to certain sections of Title 19 of the municipal code concerning zoning requirements, development standards, and development review for commercial and industrial zoning districts. The staff's recommendation is to find the proposed ordinance exempt from CEQA review and to adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve of the amendments. Please proceed with the staff report.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Staff are very excited about this proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. The purpose of this amendment is to clarify zoning requirements, streamline the development review process, provide consistency across zoning districts, reorganize land uses to be more user-friendly, and create more flexibility in the application of development standards. These changes are intended to make the development review process more efficient and business-friendly, and we also want to provide staff with additional tools to administer the code. Currently permitted uses for the seven commercial and three industrial zones are listed separately within each zoning chapter. This requires users to flip back and forth between multiple chapters to compare the requirements for each use in each zone. We wanted to create a more user-friendly format, so we are proposing to replace the use lists in each chapter with a land use matrix. This allows easy comparison of the uses and requirements across all commercial and industrial zones. We are also recommending a few use-related changes. We are proposing to regulate ancillary uses by the amount of square footage that they We are proposing to regulate ancillary uses by the amount of square footage that they occupy rather than by percentage of sales. Percentage of sales is very difficult to verify and enforce. We are also proposing to allow laundry and dry cleaning facilities in the village commercial mixed-use zone, where they are currently not permitted to encourage mixed-use developments and localize this service-type use. And we are proposing to allow restaurants by right within the professional office, limited manufacturing, and light manufacturing zones. Restaurants are currently a conditionally permitted use in the LM and M1 zones and not a permitted use in the PO zone. This is intended to streamline the permitting process for new restaurants and provide convenient dining options for employees working in these areas. We are also proposing to allow museums as a permitted use in the M1 zone, where they are currently not permitted, to encourage adaptive reuse of vacant industrial buildings. The next category of changes that we are recommending this evening are intended to improve current review processes. So right now, plan development permits and appeals process requirements are strewn all across the zoning chapters. So we have created a new standalone plan development permit chapter and appeals chapter to improve consistency. We have also created a new permit application withdrawal process that would apply for CUPs and PDPs at the discretion of the director if an applicant does not complete their application within 180 days after we notify them that their application is incomplete. This is intended to motivate applicants to move applications forward and make our records clearer regarding active projects. We are also proposing to increase permit terms from 12 months to 24 months and allow the director to grant time extensions and elevate time extension requests to the planning commission for their approval. This will avoid the need for applicants to reapply for permits if the project has not changed. Currently, the code requires similar use determinations to be made by the planning commission. We are proposing to modify this to allow these determinations to be made by the director and appeal to the planning commission. It would also allow the director to refer them to the planning commission and appeal the planning commission's decision to the city council. This will allow straightforward use determination requests to be handled quickly at the staff level, but keeps the discretionary process for more complex requests. We are also proposing to remove the director-level conditional use permit process. It only applies to alcohol manufacturing facilities and short-term daycare nurseries with more than six children. We are proposing to allow many alcohol beverage, alcohol beverage manufacturing facilities with a CUP and nurseries by right. The DCUP process has not been used often, and we have found that it doesn't offer a benefit to applicants. The procedural and noticing requirements made the DCUP process take the same amount of time as the regular CUP process. Staff have found that alcohol beverage manufacturing facilities have the potential to create adverse impacts without the enforceability of conditions of approval, and short-term daycare nurseries are regulated by the state and will remain subject to the provisions of the zoning code. We are proposing to streamline the process for concurrent permit applications to allow staff to bring these to the planning commission and the city council at the same time. An example of this would be a commercial development permit and an associated amendment to a specific plan. They would be allowed to be packaged together and moved through the process once. With this amendment effort, we also wanted to make development standards more flexible to support economic development. We are proposing to remove the requirement for drive-throughs to provide separate window areas for payment and pickup and the limitation on only one drive-through lane to allow more modern techniques to manage lines and queuing. We are also proposing to make some changes to off-street parking and loading requirements. We would like to remove the distance requirement for off-street parking to be located so many feet from the use it serves. Instead, we are proposing to allow the director to determine if parking can be provided in a safe and convenient manner. We also want to change the loading space requirement so that the director can grant relief from the requirements if larger loading spaces are not needed by the operation of the business. In addition, we are proposing to allow the planning commission and city council to reduce off-street parking requirements for new development if a parking study demonstrates that the required number of spaces exceeds the anticipated parking demand. We also want to allow some flexibility to lot size and setback requirements that apply to commercial zones as appropriate through the permit process. This will give smaller lots in the commercial zones more development options. This flexibility is intended to ensure that requirements align with the needs of each development. When appropriate, this can encourage more efficient land use, reduce development costs, support economic activity, improve design, accommodate changing freight needs, and encourage adaptive reuse and infill development. Staff have brought this item forward to support economic development goals, but we will also be completing a broader, more comprehensive review of the zoning code for consistency with the general plan update as part of the update effort. The Economic Development and Land Use Committee reviewed the proposed zoning ordinance amendment during its regular meeting on August 28, 2025, and expressed their support for the proposed amendment and suggested no changes. Staff have not made any substantive changes since this meeting. Commissioner Vandermeulen has reached out to staff and identified a few additional clarifications that should be made. I'd like to walk you through those. In the landscaping provisions that apply to parking lots, and this is in several of the zones, so this would be in the RC, CCM, professional office, CPD, SC, LM, CMU, CN, and CO2, COT zones, and the by-right residential overlay. We recommend replacing row with space as it pertains to the amount of trees required per parking spaces. So the intent of this change would be to clarify that the number of trees required is based on the number of parking spaces provided. I think it was an inadvertent error having row used there instead of space. We would like to clean that up. We are also recommending the addition of a note to Chapter 19.44, our off-street parking standards, to clarify that the term enclosed, as it pertains to parking, means garage. We recommend the replacement of the word ingredients in Section 19.32.120B with the word measures. This relates to how potential nuisances are, would be resolved. It's just an improved word choice. Ingredients is a touch odd, so I think that's just clear. We are also recommending updating the proposed zoning ordinance to replace all references to junior high with middle school, and that would be in Chapter 19.44. Again, the off-street parking standards and the residential zones. These references have already been removed from the commercial and industrial zones, and the terminology is updated in the proposed new land use matrix. And the last of these changes, we recommend replacing serve with overlap with in Section 19.44.105A4. And this is just for improved clarity. This is, these are provisions that relate to the drive-through area cannot overlap with parking spaces. So the clarification, I think, just is, it improves the reading of those provisions. We have received two public comment letters on this item. We received one letter in support, of support, for the proposed zoning ordinance amendment from Dennis Hargrave that requests allowing churches in the LM zone pursuant to the approval of a CUP. And he notes that this would either, he requests this change through either this proposed zoning ordinance amendment or future amendments. We intend to analyze land uses within the LM zone as part of a more comprehensive zoning ordinance amendment that will follow the general plan update. We have also received one letter of opposition from Mike Brown. So I'm going to take you through a few of the points made in that letter. So the letter states that the proposed zoning ordinance amendment conflates beverage manufacturing with industrial alcohol manufacturing. The letter disagrees with limiting tasting as an ancillary use. And the current code allows, there's a current use in the M2 zone under the current code that states that amusement activities other than arcades, carnivals, circuses, skating rinks, theaters, outdoor, and accessory uses are allowed in the M2 zone. And so in creating the land use matrix, we wanted to clarify what these meant, so those individual uses were incorporated into the land use matrix. The letter catches an inadvertent error referring to Los Angeles County instead of Ventura County in Section 19.67.060, discussing noticing requirements for plan development permits. And we would like to correct that error. And lastly, the letter requests placing a time limit for the city to act on a conditional use permit request, such that failure to move a permit forward would result in an automatic approval of the conditional use permit request. And staff would note that this is already covered by the Permit Streamlining Act, which holds cities to certain timelines for processing permit requests. The recommendations for this item are listed on this slide. We would also like to include the additional recommended edits that I outlined this evening. This concludes my presentation on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, and I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for that detailed presentation. Commissioner Edsall?
Yeah, it seemed like a lot of work went into this, and kind of impressed. Was this all done internally by staff, or did you guys work with a consultant?
We prepared it at the staff level.
Yeah. I want to compliment, it seemed like a lot of work went into it. And it makes sense when you're amending things, sometimes it, it helps to kind of gather it. You know, things lose, lose some of its meaning in the process of just amending it. So I, I think this was a great project and streamlined a lot of operations, but make the code read easier and more to understand. So thank you for your work on that.
It was a pleasure.
Commissioner Davidson?
Can you go back a couple of slides? I can't remember what the title was, so I'll just have to say stop when I see it.
Okay.
Keep going. Here we go. Can you, the fourth bullet, allow the director to make similar use determinations? Can you give me some very general, and I understand that you can't give me specific examples, but a couple of general examples of what, what is being referred to there?
Absolutely. So happy to clarify that. So when someone calls us and they have a use that is similar but not expressly called it, you know, useless can't capture every conceivable land use. So a lot of times, these are kind of common sense, you know, determinations. Planners are generally equipped, you know, with the support of management to make these kind of decisions. You know, so I think with this change, you know, if we got a kind of an obvious, you know, kind of common sense request where we felt like it really fit within the land uses but wasn't expressly called out, then at the staff level, we could, you know, move that request forward without having to, you know, the formality of coming before the planning commission. But where we felt that, you know, we weren't really comfortable, we weren't sure that it fit, and we wanted to refer the matter to you for consideration, then we would, we would be able to do that.
Okay. Could you conceive of any situation in which a large project was an adjacent use? In other words, it wasn't quite spelled out. And, and staff might make the determination, but the, just the scope and size of the project is such that it would be desirous from a, you know, from a planning commissioner's standpoint to have that still come, even though it's a slight, you know, are you following what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
I'd be concerned that a, a large thing that might have an impact on the community, that a decision might be made, and without guardrails about scope, we could end up with something that maybe we should have had some input on.
Absolutely. I think the intent would be anything that would be, could be construed in any sense as complex would be brought before you.
Okay.
This would be stuff that's like, you know, very obvious with no, no concern for impacts would be determined at the staff level.
Sure, sure. Okay. And then can you go forward one more towards the end now?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, the loading space requirement, I bring this up only because we went through a, a very lengthy conversation about loading zones when it came to a restaurant in town. Again, can you walk me through, is that allowed the flexibility to, for the director or staff to, to make changes to whether a loading dock is required or not? Or is that simply giving them a little flexibility in what it would look like and what it would be?
It would be flexibility for loading, so they would still be required to provide like a minimum-sized space, but it would allow us to reduce the requirement for the space to be 50 feet deep in certain situations where it just doesn't meet the operational needs of the development.
Perfect. You said something similar to that before, and those extra words made it crystal clear in my mind. So thank you. And that was it. I have no further questions. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. Thank you again for all the work that went, went into this. There's a lot of streamlining and, and effort that went into, to make the document easier to use and easier to understand. Commissioner Vandermeulen, I appreciate all of those amendments. It, it does make it more clear. On the similar use, it seems as though there, we, we had already approved of a similar use, similar use determination being made at the director level several years back, but, but maybe I'm thinking of something else. I mean, it seems like that's the first determination that's made, and it's made at the director level, but, and not planning commission.
So the code does require these requests, it still requires these requests to be brought forward to the planning commission. So this would kind of soften that requirement so that we could, you know, deal with kind of straightforward requests at, at the director level, and then more complex requests would be brought forward to you.
All right. Well, that makes sense to me because I, I don't recall being asked to, to make a similar use determination in, in past applications. On the Mike Brown letter, it seems like there's a few different areas where he's, takes issue with the general term alcohol manufacturing facilities. I'm wondering if in all such locations, if, if that could be changed to alcohol beverage manufacturing facilities?
Yes, sir. That is what we would like to do there. So to improve clarity, we can change the title of the header in the land use matrix from food and alcohol to food and alcoholic beverages, and change the specific land use within the matrix to alcohol beverage manufacturing. And then we also have a provision in the conditional use permit chapter, which is Chapter 19.62, that discusses these types of facilities. So we would also want to make the language consistent in that section. It's Section 19.62.230.
Okay, that's great. It sounds like it would take care of some of the concerns of Mr. Brown anyway. Thank you.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
First, I want to thank you for considering the changes I was concerned about, great changes. And also, after reading through this, it was quite an education, but I appreciate all the work and time that staff went into doing this. One of the things I noticed a lot that kept popping up was the, all the words shalls that were changed to may, or must, or shall, or will, to clarify and make that really understandable as to what they can and can't do, or what they have to do and don't, you know, or just maybe. And that was a lot going through there. I have a question on when you said that where you extended the permit process from 12 months to 24 months. How often do they need to report into you in that time? Or when do they need to request, like, go past the 12 months into the 24? Or what type of timeframe is there?
So we have, you know, pretty consistent communications with applicants about how it's going. We, you know, we kind of track. I think that logistically, getting construction loans and just in getting through the building permit process, it's really tight in a 12-month time period. I think we want to, you know, minimize the times that we have to do these time extensions. So the thought there is just to kind of give them a little more breathing room. And we don't feel as staff that, you know, anything's really lost by that change. We would continue to communicate with them and track their progress. That's something that we do on all of our projects.
Yeah, I just wondered how it would be like if they just didn't report in or anything for like 15 or 18 months?
We, I, we all typically reach out to our applicants. We, you know, we check in with them a lot. How's it going, you know? Because we want to anticipate the need if there is going to need to be an extension. We want to kind of understand if like the developments become infeasible for some reason, if they run into a complication, so we can, you know, hopefully help them work through it. So there's, you know, there's pretty good dialogue back and forth to make sure that they stay on track. they stay on track. And, you know, the last thing we want to do is have something expire and then have everybody go back through all of that work that we've already completed.
No, I think it was, I think it's a good change. I just want to know what the process was in between.
Yeah.
So the communication is comforting.
Yeah, we check in with all of our applicants regularly.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions or comments?
Do, I have one more, sorry.
Commissioner Davidson?
The comment that was made about tasting and that tasting is not a light use, I do want to, without admitting guilt, I am familiar with wine tasting rooms and establishments of that type and where they, where they actually make it and taste it. And it is a pretty significant impact to have tasting, have tastings go on there. So I'm wondering, are there guardrails? I mean, what is in place that would allow us to have some control over that? Because it is, it can be very impactful.
Absolutely. So there's the CUP process. These types of facilities have to go through the CUP process, and we put guardrails through conditions of approval. Kind of more broadly, the tasting is, we classify that as a use that's ancillary to these types of facilities. So we rework the definition of ancillary use to be no more than 49% of the gross floor area. We found the gross sales is just really difficult to regulate and to calculate, and I think this will be a much cleaner, you know, way to regulate this type of use.
Okay. And so, and so staff is comfortable saying that 49%, so just shy of a half of the entire footprint for an ancillary use is acceptable? I mean, that, that does kind of beg the question that you have, you know, a 10,000-foot wine making facility and 5,000 square feet is an ancillary use. Is that?
So I think-
And I'm not questioning staff, I'm just like, I want to, I'm trying to hear the-
Yeah, I appreciate that. We spent a lot of time-
The machinations that went on.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time debating this. It is difficult to set a limit. That's why this remains a conditionally permitted use, so we can, you know, kind of do it like on a project by project site-specific kind of analysis. So, you know, I think it, we probably don't want, you know, giant tasting areas that overwhelm the primary use. So, but the intent with the definition is just to make sure that it always stays less than, less than half of the primary use.
Perfect. You said all the things I was hoping you would. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I also want to thank the staff for all of your work to update the municipal code to this section. I understand that these sorts of updates can be tedious, but they're valuable to ensure that they reflect current conditions and needs. And it will surely be helpful to the public, to applicants, to navigate the code. And, you know, it provides much-needed clarity in removing obsolete language and removes burdens as well. So hopefully we'll encourage smart development, and I appreciate that it would also be much more efficient for the staff, freeing up your capacity and also make enforcement much more efficient as well. I had a similar question as to Commissioner Davidson about the similar uses, about that language and the parameters around it. And particularly, and of course, staff should, I agree with the discretion, particularly those are, you know, straightforward answers, but in terms of the scope and impact, and you provided, you know, your response of those things that are sort of like self-evident, you know, and can readily be addressed. But there's discretion into what then comes to the public, to the planning commission. Does that include, does discretion include any similar uses that would require exemptions from CEQA?
That's a great question. Let me think about that for a second. So I think anything that would require CEQA review would be required to come before you.
So if I'm understanding your question, are you asking if a ancillary use, is it an ancillary use that would be subject to CEQA if that would come before the planning commission? Not sure if I understood that correctly.
Any of the discretionary decisions that the director is now, would now be authorized to make for similar uses?
So I think that with the similar use determination, you're just kind of fitting it to see what category it goes to. Like, is it not allowed at all on the site? Is it a, does it fit within the list of permitted uses that are kind of by right? And then, or does it, is it a use that is elevated to require the approval of a conditional use permit? So it's kind of like figuring out whether the use is allowed or not, and if it is kind of where it falls within those, within those use lists that we have that are now in our matrix. So I think, you know, it wouldn't be weighing in on the project itself, but the use.
Typically-
Whether it could move forward. Like, if a use is not permitted, then we wouldn't, you know, we would let them know that that's not allowed on the site. So it would be those types of decisions.
I see. Typically, when we do get a request for a similar use determination, it's in conjunction with somebody that actually wants to establish that use somewhere in the city. So if that use that wanted to come into the city was subject to CEQA, then say if it was a discretionary approval, like a conditional use permit, then that would go before you. But if it was a ministerial type of approval, then that would not go to the planning commission.
Thank you. That's helpful. Okay. Anything else?
Okay. Now, open it up for a public comment. We do have one, Mr. Mike Brown submitted a public comment card. Please submit your, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes for your comment.
I'm the only winery brewery distillery in the town.
Is that, I think it's the other Mike there.
See if this one's on. So I appreciate the comments from staff, the questions that were asked that clarified a few points. I reviewed the entire document. I've been involved with the development department. Four years on issues with our facility that seem that some of our questions that we've had with staff or staff has had with us are going to be answered by some of the changes here. I'm puzzled and troubled by the word ancillary and the constraint or concern about square footage. I don't see that in any other form of business in this town, but it's placed specifically on our industry, and I'm not sure why. In all my, we've been in town for 20 years, served the community for a very, very long time. And again, I'm puzzled by this targeting, is what it seems. And I would have appreciated a dialogue with staff prior to, as this was coming up, because we have had an open issue for four years through multiple changes of staff. We have stood steady. Staff has flipped, new people, new ideas, new whatever, but our issue has still remained. And I have spent tens of thousands of dollars on lawyers trying to get answers. Some of this is addressed, and I would appreciate an answer on why is ancillary uses such a concern in our industry? I'll yield my, rest my time for any questions if you have them for what I submitted. I do support all the work that was put on. I do agree that it's a much cleaner document. I would have appreciated much more public notice of it, because I've talked with 15, 20 different businesses over the last three days, and they're like going, what? What is going on? So with that, no one has any questions?
Thank you. Any other questions for the staff?
No.
No? With the staff, like to address-
We have one more public comment from Dennis Hargrave.
And please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Chair Lamone and planning commissioners. My name's Dennis Hargrave. Longtime land use practitioner in the city. I've been doing this for over 30 years and dozens of entitlements from CUPs to general plan amendments. And I have to say, this is one of the best and most forward-thinking changes that's occurred over that entire period. A number of these issues I could point to, again, probably over a dozen cases where this would have saved more than a year in multiple projects. And so what staff is recommending and what your professionally competent staff has come up with on this is a great approach. So I'm fully supportive of everything that's recommended. This afternoon, I did submit a comment letter, and I hope that you got the attachment, the PDF that was with it. This is a really significant issue, and I just want to take, if you'll grant me a minute to talk about this. It's significant to the fabric of our community. There is a separation of church and state. However, there is a built-in, yes?
I'm sorry, this is a comment on an item that's not before us?
No, it is before you. It's part of the, it's part of this, it's part of this zone change.
I understand.
I'm sorry.
Please proceed.
Yeah, should have clarified. It is related to another ancillary use or another use that should be considered, I strongly feel, in the LM zone. And I'm going to, I want to give you a little rationale. I gave you written rationale extracts from the zoning ordinance, but the issue is this. Ironically, the only place where churches are allowed under a conditional use permit in industrial zones in the city is in M1. On the hierarchy of industrial uses, you have, M2 is heavy. M1 includes noise, vibration, dust, disturbance, et cetera. LM is all professional and indoors and contained. Churches are allowed in M1, but not in LM. It's the oddest twist, and no other community but Camarillo has this. Most cities don't even have LM anymore. So my concern is this, is that it seems irrational to me that we do not allow a conditional use permit process for churches and places of worship in the LM zone since we do in a heavier, more intensive zone. So that's the framework for what I want to mention briefly. I'm going to give you a contextual discussion of it now. 15 years ago, Crossroads Church, of which I'm a part, came to the city, and the city said, well, we want to put you in the building, in the outlets between the star and the back portion of the outlets, which is where Crossroads has been. But it was zoned LM. They rezoned that building to M1. I think Commissioner Murphy probably remembers that. It was a spot zoning issue. The church has successfully been there. We've outgrown the site. More than 1,000 people consider Crossroads their home church.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrave. Your three minutes are up.
Okay. May I have another moment? Thank you. As a result, there are no M1 parcels for this church to buy. There are no CPD parcels available to buy. And the amount of LM land, which is at a lower intensity, which could be processed under a CUP, whether it fits or not could be determined in the CUP, I firmly believe is an equity issue in terms of the religious issues for the church and as far as common sense. So with that, I would just strongly urge you to consider recommending that addition. We will appear both as a church and I will as a practitioner at the city council on this topic. And I just think it's common sense to at least consider-
Thank you for your comment.
And not wait. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, I'll close public comment. Would the staff like to address any of the comments?
Yes, please. So in regards to the first public comment, I want to make it clear that we're not picking on alcohol beverage manufacturing facilities. The ancillary use is a broad term. That's any use that's on a site that's less than the primary use. We really spent a lot of time thinking about how to regulate ancillary uses in an equitable way. There are, in the existing code, what we are proposing to remove is a limitation on tasting areas of only 30% of the gross floor area. So we felt with the recommended changes that we are proposing tonight, that this actually allows them, you know, through the CUP process, to be considered for up to 49% of the gross floor area and is more flexible than the current standards. In regards to the second public comment, we do just want to look at impacts. The land use changes that we've proposed are kind of within the scope of this amendment, and they were, they were kind of minor land use changes that we felt didn't have the potential for adverse impacts. So we just want to look at things like parking impacts and what have you as we go through a broader effort to look at our land uses citywide with the general plan update.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes. Is that to say that the use of a church in that lower LM is on the table and is being evaluated? Or is that just-
Yes, sir. We intend to evaluate that as part of the general plan update process. We're going to open up the land use element, and we're going to consider, look at, you know, what's working, what's not, and if we need to make any adjustments to our zones. That's like part of the very thorough analysis that will happen with the general plan update. And then we will, following that effort, come back with a very comprehensive zoning ordinance amendment to ensure that there's consistency between the zoning ordinance and our hopefully updated general plan.
Okay, thank you. Because on its face, it does not seem to jive, but I appreciate the desire to look at impacts. And I can appreciate tempering the desire to move quickly with the desire to get it right. So I appreciate that, and I'm sure that the speaker, having had decades in this area, understands that sometimes slow is fast. Thank you.
Any other questions for the staff?
No, I think mine just got answered. Thank you.
And for, I do have a couple of questions. For the general planning process, will there be an opportunity for the public to engage, provide comments?
Absolutely. We are going to have robust community engagement. That will be, we've already started with some engagement, but we're going, the pop-up, like go-to-them outreach events, we're going to be targeting in December and January. We're going to go to various events around town and connect with people. There will be community workshops. We have, we're pretty much going to be promoting the general plan update and trying to interact and engage with the public through multiple social media channels. We have a project, like a standalone project website just for the general plan update that'll have interactive components, and it will also allow us to be very transparent throughout the process. We're also forming a general plan advisory committee that's made up of people citywide. So it'll be 15 members, and they will, we will meet with them regularly and obtain their input on draft documents, and they will be kind of our, some of our ambassadors in the community to engage further with the public. So we have put together a suite of ways in which we can engage throughout the process. And it won't just be in the beginning. It's, you know, scheduled to be throughout the process at every stage.
Wonderful. Thank you. And as to the comment of the ancillary use, you described that this, the update provides greater flexibility. So I hear that there's a concern about the impact. So can you say a little bit more about, you know, what the impact is, what the change of the impact is based on this greater flexibility?
So with the change, through the conditional use permit process, an applicant could request a larger tasting area than would be currently allowed by the current code. So through that process, staff and, you know, decision makers would be able to analyze whether that is appropriate based on the location and whether they can accommodate parking. And we would be allowed through the conditional use permit process to put conditions, particularly if they propose to have events or other things like that. So the CUP process would be used to ensure that we avoid any adverse impacts in these types of facilities.
And with the CUP, if an application for a CUP came before us, would it be per event or it could be for the sort of a schedule of events over time?
So I think the intent would be to understand the needs of the business and then to have the conditions be very specific to put guardrails on what would be allowed.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, on the general plan update, where the churches in LM could be considered, what is the expected timeline for bringing that before?
We are, we have a very ambitious plan to be concluding with the general plan update. It's by the fall of, it's basically going to be a two and a half year process, and we're, we are trying very hard to keep that on track. And a comprehensive zoning ordinance amendment would follow that process.
All right, thanks. Sorry, it keeps circling back to me. In the context of the first speaker, we were talking about ancillary uses being tasting. Are there other ancillary uses that we, that can be listed off that would help to alleviate the concern of, I appreciate that he feels that it's a targeted thing, and I, being a business owner, I'm sure that's how it feels. But are there other ancillary uses for other businesses? Perhaps, I don't know, a Christmas tree farm that also sells bathtubs? I don't know, but you know-
Yeah, so we see that all the time. So the ancillary use is- So the ancillary use is, is, is a definition within our code. And so that is just anything that is kind of subservient to that primary use. The way that it was called out in the, in the provisions, in the conditional use permit section as it pertains to alcohol beverage manufacturing facilities is just to clarify that tasting areas is an ancillary use, which is, was also previously in, in our code. So it's just clarifying that that is an ancillary use. The event kind of portion is separate from that and we wanted to make that distinction very clear.
I would just also add that our industrial zones currently have a provision for ancillary uses to not exceed 30% of the gross retail sales. And we don't have an easy way to, to, to monitor that. We can't, we have a difficult time getting the gross receipts that demonstrate whether or not they're in compliance with this provision. So moving from gross receipts to floor area makes it more clearer and easier for us to ensure that there's compliance with the code.
Very good. Okay, so this, so the reason that it came up under the topic of alcohol was because that you were already, you were already fiddling under the hood with that and took the opportunity to clarify it. But ancillary could refer to any host of other operations or businesses within the community that also have a, as you said, a subservient use. It just happened to be that you were doing this and so it was appropriate to call it out at that time to add clarification.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that. I just wanted to make sure because I, I, I did hear his words and just wanted to make sure that we were there. Thank you.
I'm okay. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, I'll close up public hearing. Any additional discussion by the commissioners?
Okay, may I call for a resolution?
Resolution number PC 2025-14, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camarillo recommending approval to the City Council of Camarillo municipal code amendments concerning zoning requirements, development standards, and development review for commercial and industrial zoning districts.
I move to wave for the reading and bring it to a vote.
Second.
May I call for a vote?
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Edsel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davidson?
Yes.
Chair Limone?
Yes. The motion passes. Okay, now moving on to our next item, which is the Director's Report.
Thank you, Chair Limone. So this is the last meeting of the year and I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Planning Commission for your continued dedication and hard work. Some of the notable accomplishments this year included approving five conditional use permits, public art, a subdivision, as well as reviewing code updates, the climate action plan, safety element, and the first landmarking of the Shooli House. We have, as Megan has indicated, we've kicked off the general plan update. That's marking a significant milestone for the city. And as we move into next year, this process will become a central focus of our work plan. Our next meeting will be on January 6th and we have a couple items that are tracking for that meeting. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Now, Commission comments?
No, thank you. It's been a, it's been a great year and we have accomplished a lot and it's been a, a pleasure to be a part of that.
Well.
For me, I guess it's been a great year. It's interesting, it's always interesting. But I always want to thank the staff all year long for all the work that you put into this so that it's easy for us to understand. And I know for me, it's like, I always say, I start writing down my questions and then I'll go a couple pages later and I'll get my answer most of the time. So I greatly appreciate all that you've been doing all year for us. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second both of those comments and just say that I very much appreciate working with this panel of, of individuals. We, we do our best to evaluate the applications as, as they come along, but what we do is far less effort than what the staff puts out to, to put these all before us in organized form and, and well thought through. So thank you.
I also wanted to express my gratitude to the staff, to all of you, for your commitment and your diligence and professionalism and including through turnover, which can be challenging for everyone else to, you know, really maintain, maintain all of the work and ensure that it's moving forward. So everyone who like organizes us, to those who do the analysis and provide the presentations, it's very much appreciated. And I appreciate my fellow commissioners. It's been such a pleasure serving with all of you and thank you for, for all of your work. Okay. And with that, we will adjourn.